Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled City Council meeting. This meeting is called to order, and I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Mike Bruno.
Here.
Tara Burkhart.
Here.
Mike Clemens.
Here.
Becky Ruby.
Here.
Ian Kilburg is out. Craig Maladra.
Here.
Richard Marx.
Here.
Jean McGowan.
Here.
Chairman Reddicki.
Here.
Robert Swanson.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, we begin our City Council meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I think it's only appropriate that our good friend and colleague, Alderman Jim Reddicki, lead us in the pledge this evening.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, before we attack the items of business this evening, I would like to begin tonight's meeting with a moment of silence to recognize the life and extraordinary contributions of a gentleman named Tom McCracken. Most of you probably heard the news last week that Tom passed away at the tender age of 94. An extraordinary life, for those of you who knew Mr. McCracken, knew him to be a gentleman who very rarely, if ever, sat still. His life story is one of perpetual motion. He was a veteran, he was an FBI agent, he was a well-regarded attorney, he helped start the Mental Health Board, otherwise known as the 708 Board, here in Geneva, and he also served as city attorney from 1963 to 1973. He leaves behind his daughters Anne, Kate, and his son David, and three grandchildren. Tom was a longtime resident of Geneva, Illinois. He clearly made his mark by serving others, and on behalf of this council and this community, we send our thoughts to his family, and I ask you to join me in just a moment to recognize Thank you all very much. Item 3A, folks, under Public Hearing, Special Items and Presentations, recognize Alderman Jim Reddicki for his years of service to the city of Geneva. Now, those of you who are not aware, this is the second time we're doing this, isn't it, Jim?
It is. You said we had to get the party?
No, you did. We had to shift them up a little bit. Alderman Reddicki served the 2nd Ward from 1999 to 2006, took a brief hiatus, returned, and served from 2015 through this evening. It's traditional that we open up the floor to comments from your colleagues, and this is not a Dean Martin roast, this is a tribute to your service, so to the dais, the floor is yours.
I'd like to start off, thanks. Well, first of all, thank you all. You know, my first comments are to thank the voters in the 4th Ward who, you know, have given me the honor and the privilege to represent them for the last four years, to be their voice, to be heard in these chambers, and I really appreciate that and humbled by their, by the privilege to do that for the residents of the 4th Ward. I also want to thank all my friends that came out today, the murderers row and a couple of rows back here, some of my, that's my campaign team over there, and I thank you guys for coming out, I really appreciate that, I appreciate your friendship. I also want to congratulate all the aldermen that are going to be seated tonight, you know, there are five of them, I guess Dean's not here today, but congratulations to everybody who's going to be sworn in later at the second meeting. And I also want to congratulate everybody that ran for office this time, you know, that's a huge commitment for, you know, your resources, it's a taxing thing to do, and it's just out of love of community, for no other reason, so anyone who filed and ran in a race this year, you have my gratitude, my appreciation, and my respect. I also want to thank the mayor and all the aldermen for being patient with me at times. It's been absolutely my pleasure to serve with you, you know, sometimes we get passionate about things that we have here, but, and sometimes it gets a little bit heated, but I always know that everyone's true desire is for the better of this community, that you have Geneva at your heart, and I always remember that. You know, whether or not, you know, preservation is what your, is what your calling is, or for me, maybe property owners' rights, or seniors, or whatever that is, or housing, you know, we all have a passion that we bring to the table, and it's good that we do that. It's good that we all have something that we bring here that we champion, and I appreciate and I respect that in each and every one of you, so thank you. And also, a big thanks to the city staff, I mean, they just make me, they make us look very good at times with our constituents, whether it's public service, whether it's public safety, police, fire, certainly Public Works or Administration, any time that I've ever had to call them and ask for help on behalf of constituent, they always exceeded expectations, and usually our citizens were completely blown away by the level of service that our staff provides, so for that, I thank all of you for that, so. And finally, I want to thank my wife Maureen, who's in the back there today. You know, I've stuck you with four years of dishes on Monday nights, so that's 208 Monday nights that are dishes I need to do for you because I'm running out to meetings all the time, so thanks for that. But also, you know, we've cut a lot of weekends short, you know, we've come back from, we have a vacation home that we, it seems like we're constantly, just like today, trying to get back here for meetings, and never once has, have you ever made a, complained about cutting it short, you've always encouraged me to be here, you never complained about that, and I appreciate it, but also, more importantly, thank you for your, for the perspective that you've always given me, you know. If you've ever heard anything that sounds logical out of me, or something that really wasn't off the wall, it's probably because I ran it past Maureen first, you know, who gives me a good perspective about that, so Maureen, thank you for everything, you've made me a better alderman, there's no doubt about that. You know, as far as city government too, you know, sometimes we look a little bit clunky here, you know, we don't always get the Roberts rules, or the procedures, or we don't know what ordinances apply, and stuff like that, that's because we're not professionals here. We're not professional politicians, nor should we ever be, and that's why this is still the most effective, the most efficient, and the best form of government is your local representation. So, it's been my honor, it's been my privilege, I've had a lot of fun, and I would encourage anybody to seek elected office and to do this, it's just been really a lot of fun, so thank you all very much.
Thank you. And now for rebuttal.[427.12][427.12](Laughter). The floor is open, Mr. Reddicki? Anyone? Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, you said most of what I wanted to say, but working with you has been challenging at times, although you have been, as you said last, last time, you've always been a staunch defender of historic preservation. So, even when, what I, what I really admired a lot from Jim is, even when there could be several people within, with his position, Jim was always best able to articulate that position clearly. I don't always have that, that skill, but pleasure serving with you, good luck to you.
Alderman Maladra?
Aye. So, it's the second time I had to do this, it sort of sucks. Um, Jim and I don't often agree, but, but there's a thing I refer to, I call it the quality of disagreement, and I think the quality of disagreement between us, when it's there, is very high. I think that the best ideas are ideas that are tested, tempered, challenged, and strengthened in the process, and that's what this council gets from having you on it, challenged, tested, strengthened, and we're going to miss you, it's big shoes to fill, thank you very much.
Alderman Burkhart?
I first met Jim when we were both seeking the endorsement of the Daily Herald four years ago, luckily, I was not up against him, and the way he took control of that room with that editor who was asking questions, I left thinking, "I have a lot to learn." And so, I want to thank you for all the experience you brought, not only from City Council, but Plan Commission, and your history with Geneva, you've seen Geneva change, have faced many challenges over the years, we didn't always agree, but I always loved hearing how you got to your conclusion, you always listened to the rest of us, and you added a lot to the discussion, so you'll be missed, thank you for your service.
Now, if Dean calls in from Italy, this will be impressive.[574.82][574.82](Laughter). Is there anyone, anyone in the audience wishes to, former Alderman Singer, welcome, sir?
Good evening, Mayor Burns, and distinguished members of the Geneva City Council.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you and viewing audience of this great city. My presence here is in honor of a leaving council member. Jim Reddicki is a man of strong Christian faith, one who has held a prominent position in one of the country's leading and largest insurance companies, and a devoted family man who is cherished by his wife and family. His tenure on the City Council has been interesting, in that he has served as alderman of both the 2nd and 4th Wards, totaling almost 12 years of service for Gen, for the city of Geneva. Jim has been a passionate public servant, always being mindful and observant of the needs of his constituency. Having served with him on the City Council, he is a friend and former colleague, and I will always remember him as a beacon of fairness and consistency. My wish for Alderman Reddicki is for him to be remembered for all his contributions to Geneva, and for him to continue calling Geneva his home. Thank you so much, my friend.
Is there anyone else? Without objection, Alderman Reddicki, do you mind if we advance through the agenda?
Please do.
We do have a gift, though.
This is him from the last time.
Uh-oh. Just for those of you tuning in or watching, and you're curious what's in the bag, it is a map of all the potholes.[753.62][753.62](Laughter). Item 4, ladies and gentlemen, amendments to the agenda, are there any amendments this Item 5 is the omnibus agenda, all items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council, and they can be considered and voted upon with one motion, is there such a motion?
(Inaudible).
Alderman McGowan makes the motion? Alderman Clemens makes the second? Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, take the roll.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhart.
Aye.
Clemens.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Reddicki.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Item 5 passes with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent, we skip down two. Item number 9A, and that is to recommend acceptance of fiscal year 2018-2019, 4th Quarter Goals Status Report. Is there a motion to so accept?
So.
Second. Burkhart makes the motion, and Marx makes the second, any questions or comments regarding the report? Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor of its approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent, item number 10, folks, is municipal bills for payment, we kindly ask for our city clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Total bills, $2,535,571.51.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read, the individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's packet on the city website.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented, which are also available on the city's website and in the council packet this evening, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Burkhart. Any questions or comments regarding the bills? Seeing none, hearing none, Mr. Clerk?
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhart.
Aye.
Clemens.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Reddicki.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Item 10 passes with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. Item 11, folks, is committee the whole items of business, all those items were considered under the consent vote, therefore, we jump to item number 12, presentations, there are none, item 13, new business, anyone from the audience, any new business, whether it be questions, concerns, considerations, recommendations? From the dais? Hearing none? Seeing none? Alderman Reddicki, any advice?
I move to adjourn.
Motion by Alderman Reddicki to adjourn?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Marx, all in favor of adjourned this meeting, the final meeting of this fiscal year, and the final meeting for Alderman Reddicki, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome, we are about to begin our first City Council meeting of the new fiscal year, but we have some ceremony to participate in, and to honor and to recognize our council members, but first, I want to recognize the gentleman who has graced us with his presence to swear in our council members. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my honor to present to you Judge Keith Johnson. Keith Johnson is a lifelong resident of Kane County. Keith, his wife Annie, and their two sons, Eric and Adam, have lived in Geneva since 2004. After graduating from law school, Keith worked as a Kane County Assistant State's Attorney from 1995 to 2000. He then spent 16 years in private practice doing civil litigation, and in September of 2016, Judge Johnson was sworn in as Associate Judge here in Kane County. He presided in the Kane County Branch Court hearing traffic and misdemeanor cases until September of 2018. Since then, Judge Johnson has been handling a court call where he hears a variety of cases, including daily bond call, emergency orders of protection, requests for arrest warrants, and search warrants, civil forfeitures, and expungements. He also performs weddings as part of his courtroom assignment. No weddings tonight, Judge, that we know of, yes. Ladies and gentlemen, Judge Keith Johnson.[1060.12][1060.12](Applause). And ladies and gentlemen, Judge Johnson is fully mic'd up, so he is ready to go, sir, the floor is yours.
Okay. Well, I wanted to thank the mayor and the city for giving me this opportunity to swear in the elected alderman. I was born in Aurora, my wife was born in Elgin, we compromised in 2004 and moved to Geneva, and we've never regretted it a moment since. We've raised our two children here, and just feel blessed every day that we're able to live in the city of Geneva, so thank you for this opportunity this evening.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
And any particular order in the way we?
Whatever, whatever you prefer.
Okay, maybe we can go in order of?
Well, I believe there's an order in terms of the agenda, right?
Yeah, they're by ward.
They're by ward, yes.
So, we'll start out, first ward would be Tara Burkhart, if you want to come on down. And if anyone is here with her, and they want to step up, that would be great.
We're going to get out of the way, so as not to ruin the photo.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Tara Burkhart.
Aye, Tara Burkhart.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
In the city of Geneva, county of Kane, aforesaid.
In the city of Geneva, county of Kane, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of alderman.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of alderman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service.[1175.16][1175.16](Applause). Next, I think, would be Ward 2, and that's my home ward, Michael Clemens, in fact, I think he knocked on my door earlier this spring, so.
I tried to hit him.
So, I think he did, so. And if there's anyone here that wants to step up with Mr. Clemens, all right, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Michael Clemens.
I, Michael Clemens.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
In the city of Geneva, county of Kane, aforesaid.
In the city of Geneva, county of Kane, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of alderman.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of alderman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.[1238.66][1238.66](Applause). I think our newest addition here would be in the 4th Ward, Gabriel Caven, if you want to come on down, and if there's anybody here with him, please step up. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Gabriel Caven.
I, Gabriel Caven.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
In the city of Geneva, county of Kane, aforesaid.
In the city of Geneva, county of Kane, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of alderman.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of alderman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, thank you for your service.[1322.83][1322.83](Applause).
Just hang right there, please, and that's everything you just said.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then Craig Maladra, the 5th Ward. Any entourage this evening? You've been doing this a while, right? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Craig Maladra.
I, Craig Maladra.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
In the city of Geneva, county of Kane, aforesaid.
City of Geneva, county of Kane, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of alderman.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of alderman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, thank you for your service.[1400.16][1400.16](Applause). Thank you to all of you for your service, thank you, thank you.
Judge, thank you so much.
My pleasure, thank you, Mayor.
A true honor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now you can take a roll call.
Now I can take a roll call, sorry about that.
It's all right, it makes it fun.
Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, sir, please take the roll call for our fiscal year 19, fiscal year 20, City Council.
Mike Bruno.
Here.
Tara Burkhart.
Here.
Mike Clemens.
Here.
Becky Ruby.
Here.
Gabriel Caven.
Here.
Ian Kilburg is out. Craig Maladra.
Here.
Richard Marx.
Here.
Jean McGowan.
Here.
Robert Swanson.
Here.
We begin this meeting, as we did the last one, with the Pledge of Allegiance, I would like to ask Alderman Gabriel Caven to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, we are under item 3, Public Hearings, Special Items and Presentations, item 3A is to recommend mayor's reappointment of city officials for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. You all have that list of officials to be reappointed, they come to you with my full and uncompromising recommendation. So, motion by Marx?
Second.
Seconded by Clemens. Any questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhart.
Aye.
Clemens.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Caven.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
In the back row are our appointed officials. To all of you, thank you very much for re-upping another year, you guys do extraordinary work, Item 3B, folks, is to recommend approval of Resolution Number 2019-47, appointing Alderman Craig Maladra as mayor pro tem. Alderman Swanson makes the motion, Alderman Burkhart makes the second. Any questions or comments regarding the duties and/or pay?[1590.01][1590.01](Laughter). A voice vote is sufficient, but a roll call is even more fun, so, Mr. Clerk, a roll call would be in order.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhart.
Aye.
Clemens.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Caven.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Item 3C is to recommend mayor's appointment of Stephanie Dawkins as Deputy Clerk of the city of Geneva.
So moved.
Motion by Burkhart. Seconded by Marx. Questions or comments regarding this appointment? Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, sir, roll call vote.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhart.
Aye.
Clemens.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Caven.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Congratulations, Ms. Dawkins, and thank you. And item 3D, folks, which is oh-so-appropriate, is to proclaim May 5 through 11, 2019, as Public Service Recognition Week. Is there a motion? Bruno makes the motion. Seconded by McGowan. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Excellent. Amendments to the agenda, folks, anyone on the dais have any amendments they'd like to offer on the agenda presented? There really is no consent agenda. Well, actually, there is.
Well, the committee as a whole.
Nope. That's just the announcement. As the record show, there are absolutely no municipal bills for payment. Isn't that exciting?
We didn't incur anything in the last?
We incurred nothing in the last seven minutes. Item 12, folks, Presentations of Ordinances, Petitions, Resolutions, and Bid Awards, item 12A. Consider Approval of Ordinance Number 2019-06, Rezoning, Zoning Map Amendments, the Subject Realty from R1 Low Density Single Family Residential District to the R3 Medium-to-High Density Single Family Residential District, otherwise known as Greenhouse Point Subdivision, presented by Nitty Group LLC slash Geneva LLC. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Marx?
Second.
Seconded by Burkhart. Questions or comments regarding the motion? Anyone from the dais? See none? Alderman Clemens?
I believe that Nitty people are here tonight. I just, I've had some questions from residents in my ward, asking about the density of this project and the lack of green space, there have been previous developments proposed there where there's been more green space, I'm just wondering, is there any way to have any more green space in that subdivision, or is it just impossible?
One moment, please, Mr. Nitty and Alderman Clemens, I believe there's some confusion I believe there's some confusion as to whether this is germane to this particular item. That might be best covered under the next.
Oh, the plat, yeah.
Yeah, the plat of survey, et cetera.
Thank you.
This is just on the rezoning, ladies and gentlemen. Regarding the rezoning, anyone? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhart.
Aye.
Clemmons.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Caven.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Motion passes, folks, with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. Item 12 B is to consider approval of resolution number 2019-48, approving a preliminary and final plat of subdivision for Greenhouse Point subdivision presented by the Nitty Group LLC slash Geneva LLC. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Marx?
Second.
Seconded by Burkhart. Alderman Clemmons, I'll defer to you since you spoke last time.
Let's pretend this is the first time I asked that question.
You can always redo the tape, because we've done that one before.
I mean, is there any way to get any more green space in there? I mean, is there a reason why it can't be 19 homes or 18 homes? I mean, I know you want to make as much money as possible, obviously. I don't begrudge you that.
Hold on. It's not about... Yeah, let's... Mr. Nitty?
Can we just get some?
Yeah. And obviously, for your benefit, sir, and the benefit of those tuning in and those joining us live, we all have been provided copies of the minutes from the Plan Commission meetings, as well as access to commentary made, et cetera, et cetera. So I know a lot of this was discussed at the Plan Commission as well, so there's no need to go too deep, but obviously, the alderman has a question with respect to the green space issue, so if you could just focus on that, that'd be great.
Your question again?
Is there any way for you to squeeze in some green space into that development?
No. I mean, we got rezoned for R3. Actually, we have minimal lots, but, you know, there's a lot of bigger lots there. There's almost some over 20,000 square feet, so I think there's enough green space plus the pan, so I think, you know, it is what it is.
It is what it is. All right. Thank you.
Alderman Ruby.
On the plan... At the Plan Commission, I know there was discussion about the homes being 12 feet apart. That was the minimum. They're further than that in some cases?
Some are going to be farther because they're bigger lots, but...
Do you know the range? 12 is the minimum?
12 feet would be, you know, the minimum, but it's just, you know, some of the lots, like I said, there's some 20,000 square feet. Those could be a lot more than that, and I think that, you know, the 12 feet is the R3 requirement, so, you know, six feet on each side.
Right.
So we follow the requirement, but I think that's going to be only... I think we have six or seven lots or small, and then you have homes of pretty good size. They start at 10,000, some are 12,000, 13,000, some are 20,000, so.
Okay. You don't know, though, how much of an increase from six feet or 12 feet the houses become at other points?
I mean?
I'm curious what the range is. I know the minimum space between houses is 12 feet. I'm curious what the range is. How big does that number get? Like, which... In the case where one house is the furthest from the neighbor's house, what is that length or width?
I mean, the side yards is going to be 12 feet apart from each neighbor's, and I'm not sure what your question is as far as...
Director DeGroot, may I ask if you could perhaps provide some clarification?
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
So, I think if I'm understanding the question, that the answer is that the minimum setback is six feet, but we won't know what that range is until the lots build out, because each lot will be built out customly, so we won't know what that range will be until each lot builds out.
Okay.
Right, yeah, that's right.
All right. And the house sizes are... It was 2,100 to 3,100 square feet for each home?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Maladra.
Mr. Nitty?
This is for Mr. Nitty. Mr. Nitty?
Sorry. So just for my frame of reference, how does the density of Greenhouse Point compared to the developments you're doing in Glen Allen and Downers Grove?
Glen Allen, they're pretty much, we're the same thing. Six, you know, six side yards we're doing. We just finished a big project in Elmus, 56 homes. We took down the old Elmus Hospital.
That's...
Yeah, so those are six feet apart, and they're bigger homes, you know, they're 3,000 square feet, some are 5,000 square feet, so. And they're pretty much, they look all different. We take pride in our design, and we try not to look like a cookie cutter, so I think this project would be great the same way.
Right.
And I think that, you know, especially ranches, we're doing more ranches. They're not going to look that close, because two-story, it does look closer than the one-story, but I think it's going to be a great part.
So generally, the density is the same, the houses are more... These homes are ranch, whereas those...
Yeah, and to the south of... To the south of Greenhouse Point, there's R3 zoning, and, you know, that's pretty much the way we follow, but except in our subdivision, we have a lot bigger lots than to the south. Most of them are pretty much the same size.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the dais for either Mr. Nitty and/or Mr. DeGroot? We do have a motion on the table. We do have a second, or I should say the floor, excuse me. Any last-minute questions, curiosities? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhart.
Aye.
Clemmons.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Caven.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
The motion passes, folks, with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. We're at new business, folks. Item 13, anyone from the audience, any new business, questions, comments, curiosities? From the dais? Yes, Alderman McGowan.
Thank you, Mayor Burns. If anyone has walked around downtown Geneva lately, you've probably noticed the beautiful spring gardens that have been planted with a lot of pansies and other spring flowers. All of those gardens are courtesy of the many dedicated volunteers that are part of the Geneva Beautification Committee. They fundraise to get the money to buy the plants and supplies that are needed, and then spend their time volunteering to plant the gardens. They do look really lovely despite having been snowed on twice already this spring, but those gardens are a big part of what draws people to downtown when they can choose, if they have a free day on a weekend or whenever, where do you want to go? Let's spend the day somewhere fun, and I really truly feel that the gardens that are planted and maintained by the Beautification Committee are a big reason why a lot of people choose to come spend the day in Geneva or plan their wedding here or, you know, whatever it may be. So I just would like to recognize all of the volunteers. I help with the Geneva Beautification Committee a little bit. I'm still new to it, so I'm learning a lot about it as I go, but it's really a great group to be a part of. They're always looking for volunteers, and you can find more information about the Geneva Beautification Committee on the City of Geneva website, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Caven, any suggestions?
Is this where I make a motion to adjourn?
This isn't Jeopardy. You made that a question, so you have to make it a statement.
Well, no. I know that I'm the only brand-new alderman, even though there were several people that were sworn in today, and I know there was all the people that spoke, and Mr. Rodecky spoke earlier as well. I would just like to, you know, thank everybody and all the support that I have had going through this the last couple of months. I am very excited for the opportunity to represent the community, as well as working with, you know, the rest of the council, yourself, and city staff, so I definitely look forward to... I look forward to the next four years.
We look forward to having you.
And then I would like to make a motion to...
Well said.
Well done.
Second, Alderman Clemmons, AKA Paul Simon. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.